Okay, so since we're gonna go ahead and start with presenters, we're gonna go ahead and start recording the meeting too. Um, I said, um, a sorry, there is one person here that wants to do some announcement, give out flyers, Aya Siddhaja Darlene. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and give her, hers is a short presentation. Okay, thank you. Um, Aya, uh, she'll be handing out mammograms for the ladies to get those done on a yearly basis. It's important, especially when we get older. As you get older, I think you'll have to start getting mammograms done for yourselves. Okay. Red Feather Development Group. Dewayne Synergy.
Did you, did you, did the Trump sees resolutions too?
Do they happen?
They haven't, but the thing is. This was the resolution proving support of the local urban accessible road conditions around the town. And then that, then what's having or transparency. Then this next one. Environmental cleanup of the old transport. Did you want me to put that in there too?
I just reiterated that I need the five hundred dollars worth in your door or window that's a few. Several years ago, like two, three, that. Although and and the bathtub was put in great, but the owners were satisfied. That's what, you know, that's what matters because we do that after assessment. But if it's elderly, no way can they ask for a bathtub. Why are they asking for a bathtub? So it's a walk and shower that we do. Walk and shower, but when elderly's are disabled. It also comes with A D A part, A D A part, A disability back. And it also comes with a higher toilet seat. So and it comes with a shower head. So that's what that. The other thing is I'm glad you reminded me subconsciously, we helped with um a mini split. Mini split is is a um is a small um air conditioner heater. If you put this poster sideways, half of it will be a uh air conditioner. The other half can be a power plug heater and it saves electric. It's mainly for our A P S customers. But if you um if you really adamant that you have no stoves, no uh wood stoves or heat stoves or pellet stove, we will consider you for an A P S mini split, which is four thousand dollars, but you don't mind again, as long as that person is healthy and safely livable. The other project is wood stove. So all of this is opening up in January. You can pick up applications now. We won't be considered until next December or January. So the wood stove D P A, we pass it now every six months and we're good for submitting the last names and we probably have the mountains in jail. Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um. Other D applications are available. That's all. Although the offices are in Flagstaff. Although she um will probably. There's um ways to contact them and there's a telephone number. There's a email address right there. A call A D January. So let me um start this meeting because we have enough people now. So I'm gonna call this meeting to order at eleven fifty. A M mountain standard time. Although I'm gonna call on um Mister Bird Stresser. If you could give us a word of prayer. Okay, with that, um agenda. You probably looked it over. Uh I need an approval for agenda. I need a motion. Earl Smith. Second. Jamie Noteste. Questions, comments, concerns? On the agenda? What we'll do probably is just um read out the uh resolutions. The rest is pretty much the same on every meeting. The preliminaries are always there except for presentations and then reports. Announcements. Um except for on upcoming scheduled meeting. Permit is meeting. It's gonna be on Thursday the fourteenth. Permit is meeting is on December fourteenth, which is Thursday. And then the rest are correct. So I'll go ahead and have um our Secretary Treasurer read the resolution, the eleven resolutions that are there.
Good morning, everybody. T B K two zero two three dash three four five dash zero zero one. Accepting and approving the November two thousand twenty-three budget report. Number two is accepting and approving the monthly cash receipt deposits for November two thousand twenty-three in the amount of six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. Number three is approving and supporting the budget transfer two thousand dollars from zero three dash six six one seven lake charges to one zero three dash six four one seven internet services of two thousand dollars to cover the shortfalls today that were not anticipated. Number four is approving and supporting the budget transfer of eight hundred dollars from zero one dash six three five two purchases foods chapters eight hundred dollars to cover the shortfalls today that were not anticipated. Number five is approving and supporting the approving and supporting to compensate public employment office specialist participants for Christmas Day and New Year's Day in appreciation to their dedication to the community need projects and events. Number six is approving and supporting legislation zero two five five dash two three in action relating to the Naviikiet Committee and Nava Nation Council overriding the nomination president veto of the Nava Nation Council's resolution number C zero dash eight five dash two three and act amending title twenty-six of the nomination code to allow for virtual attendance at chapter meetings. Number seven is supporting the supporting and approving the ten ten-year plan or master planning on the establishment of a new outpatient center within the Topi Kim community. Number eight is approving and supporting the staff and official travel to the twenty-nine Indian Nations and Travel Legislative Day at the Arizona State Capitol on Wednesday, January tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Number nine, improving and supporting the Community Land Use Planning Committee recommendation to have the Red Lake Management Company Sinclair Store Crossroad Store maintain a safe and accessible road around the store. Number ten is approve and support the Community Land Use Planning Committee's recommendation to enhance transparency and community participation in chapter houses in chapter house land withdrawals. Number eleven is approve and support the Community Land Use Committee's recommendation to start the environmental cleanup process for the burnt down old crossroad store. And then moving on to reports with announcements and then uh sign. That's the amended agenda right into record.
Thank you. Development for reading the resolutions. Okay, with that, any questions, comments, concerns? I think no A Y will go ahead and put this to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Abstain, sorry. Okay. All right, approval of the agenda passes with thirty-one approval, zero opposed, four abstained. Approval of last meeting minutes from November thirteen, two thousand twenty-three. Um again, this is posted on the website, the chapter website, and also on Facebook. Just the website, okay.
So again, if you guys go to the website, you go to T B K Meetings and Area Services, you just click on that. It'll take you to the website. It'll scroll down to where it has the chapter meeting agendas along with last chapter meetings. Just click on that and it should take you to the uh meeting minutes for that week. Along with the along with the budget reports, it should take you to the um the wind system. And then we have our county delegate and our legislative assistance report.
Okay, um. If you want it to be reported, some highlights off of it, resolutions. How many resolutions did we pass? We passed five resolutions last month. One, of course, is always the monthly um budget report and the monthly uh cash receipts. That's what we had last month. And then we also did a general wage adjustment for the chapter manager, um which was signed by the uh Napa Nation President. And then we did uh approving and supporting staff and official travel to the two thousand twenty-four Reservation Economic Summit. That's in March twenty-four. Uh accepting and supporting for student financial assistance to the eligible applicant in the amount requested. That was also done and passed. And then that's all the um resolutions that we had. Then every um they did their uh reports of what happened in the past month. Those were upcoming um meetings and upcoming uh announcements. So I need a motion. Uh Renelda, Willie, and Jamie Noteste. Questions, comments, and concerns? And as always, if you want a copy of the last meeting minutes, you can always come to the uh administration office over there and ask for a copy. Or you can go to the website and print it out. If you have a printer at home and stuff, you can always print it. No comments, questions, or concerns?
Can you show the website?
The website was.
Topi Kim Chapter.
So when you go into Google, type in Topi Kim Chapter, topikimchapter dot dot navochapters dot org. And take you to the main page. And then it just should have some general information as to what needs to uh what's out there, food distributions, all the other good stuff, the trail, the hours. Little history background, then you go to services, scholarships, all the other stuff here. Those are your links. Uh C Club, Cub C is under construction. But those are your Cub C members there. And then you have your veterans. Again, that one's also possibly under construction as there's some old uh items in here. The other nap, that's pretty much the links.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? If there's none, I'll ask for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands. Raise your hands up high. Abstain. Abstain. Hey. Approval of the last meeting minutes, November thirteen, two thousand twenty-three passes with twenty-eight approvals, zero opposed, and seven abstained. Hey, we already did red feather. We already did um. Now that we added, um yeah, that was just a small announcement. And then um County Supervisor Candidate Ross First Stresser.
Madam President. Chapter officials, thank you very much for giving this opportunity. My name is Ross Bergstresser. My mother is from the German Wohmiller Lider clan. My father is from the Pennsylvania Dutch and Irish clan. I'm a candidate for Copina County Board of Supervisors, Democrat, running for for public office. I've been here a lot. I'd say a lot. I'm very, I see a lot of very familiar faces, some that some that don't know me, but I am here to stay. I am here to to listen to you and listen to your needs and maybe life is what's important to you. And you have to do that. I have to do that. It's important. We need leadership and representation so that you know who who you are and do what you need and want. So you have to be out. So I am here. I am out. The election isn't until August of next year, the primary election. And most of you see me on that. Um I do help with the volunteering with the food distribution as well, but I I'm gonna apologize in advance. I won't even come to the one on the eighteenth. I got a previous commitment to another chapter that that has requested my presence that they're I'm gonna read. Could just let you know a little bit more about me. The Flagstaff here, Copina County for since I was ten years old, grew up in Flagstaff, East Flagstaff, Copina High School, graduated Northern Arizona University and in the public administration. I'm retired from the Copina County Sheriff's Office. I'm also retired from the United States Air Force, but I am a decorated combat veteran. I'm retired, so I can do this job full-time. Some people will have a carry on their uh forty-hour work week and then also they should also be a support supervisor. This is my full-time job. I dedicated myself to do this on a full-time basis. I'm a father of five, grandfather of nine. I consider myself a family man with family values and Christian morals, which is very important. Sometimes the white thing to do, not necessarily the most popular thing to do at the time, but still is the white thing to do. People need to stand up and make sure that they that they can be the white thing, that they can be the white. And that stand tall in their beliefs, but necessary for their life and also to assistance of others. I'm here for the remainder of the of the party. Thank you for the food in advance. It smells good. It hasn't taken me hungry. I haven't breakfast yet. So thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them for you. I have a petition here and those who are willing to sign my petition, what that petition does is is allow me to for my name to be put on the ballot. So if there's any Democrats and independents that are in this room, if you'd be willing to sign my petition, you can get that done. Thank you for your time. Thank you very much for giving me opportunity to put time to speak. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mister Bird Stresser. Coconut County Supervisor, you watch for next year. Um next year is election year. So A A object, um yeah, you watch. There'll be, I don't know if Lena Fowler is gonna run again, but A that's who he's gonna be running against.
Actually, it's not Lena Fowler. It's actually Judy Begay.
Oh, 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 I forgot. We did, we districted Judy Begay, A A D C. Because she lost on race. A A Bedasni. I Judy has not come to us yet. She hasn't come here yet. And we districted. We wanted to get out of Lena, my um Sumad Lena, but the district because she only comes here when it's election year. So Ebony not uh we districting. They voted to redistrict. So now we're in a different district. So A A she put up. If Judy runs again, that is, I don't know if she is. All right. Um Mariva Homer? Okay, um. Oh, and then just talk louder because we don't have our microphones.
Okay, so I started talking right now. Good morning, good afternoon, more or less. Um I'm Mariva Homer. I'm the um uh Chief Executive Officer of the Kianta Service Unit. I've been in Kianta since January of twenty-two. I was acting until the end of November. That's when I became the permanent CEO for the service unit in Kianta. Um my plan is toward it. A lot of people in here are probably with a. Thank you for allowing me to present this um proposal for for the project for the inscription house help clinic. Um what I wanted to do was just um real quick on in the background, um when I got to Kianta Service Unit, um what we did is I I did a site visit to the clinic here. I've never been to inscription ever. So in um December twenty-three was the first time I was here inscription house. Um the clinic is 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 small. It's a small clinic. It's been built for, you know, a number of years. It needs major repairs and it needs a lot of uh replacements. Um in January, I believe it was April of twenty-twenty-one, that's where we discovered it was um it um the underneath pipeline uh uh of the building needed major repairs for that building. And the other part was um the radiology. There was a brand new radiology, a huge big equipment that was in there. And it sat there for two years. So when I got there in um December twenty-twenty, that's when I we started working with the Napa Area Engineering Services. And we had to do a contractor and have a contractor come in to redo that radiology floor by itself. So it's a whole of the weight of that new radiology system. It's a really nice, simple tool. That was just in there for two years because there was, they couldn't get the contractor to come in to uh they couldn't get the contractor to come in to fix that floor because that machine weighs almost a ton. Um so eventually we got that done. So when we were doing that construction, that's when we found we found out about the earth piping, a lot of infrastructure issues with the electrical panels, um also with the expansion of the dental side. Uh right now, we only have about two chairs right now in the high health dental. And I want to expand it. Our population has grown so much and we're we're doing a lot of these referrals for contract health or P R C. And we want to do the greenhouse. We have very good staff of right eye health. I'm really proud of them. Um so what I would like to do is grow that in a nutshell, okay, with um for the inscription house. When we want the presentation up here, so you want to go to this page? So this proposal was actually done by Bill Galloio and he is the acting health assistant and administrator right now. Uh today he's not able to attend weekly here, but I do have Ms. Carolyn De Blaisdahl, which is she's a great asset to us in line. She's helped write this proposal as well.
So in reality, the table contents I'm gonna go over is just the purpose, key issues of what our infrastructure system is, and then basically the agent summary and the agent of the facility, and then the statistics of patient visits. Go ahead and go down. So right now inscription house, which is sixty-five miles um south of of Kianta, um it is a forty-hour per week ambulatory care, which basically opens from Monday through Friday, eight A M to five P M. And since last eight years, we've actually increased our population to twenty-two-hundred-and-ninety-eight. Um in addition, we do provide um lavatory, pharmacy, dental, mental health, which is being supported right now from Kianta Health Center. The dental uh is basically monitored here as well as in Kianta. We do have a diabetes health education, which is from the S D P I grant, which we normally do and monitor that from Kianta Health Center. We do have radiology and optometry services. So those are all preventative services that we provide to the community here inscription. So those are all preventative services that we provide to the community here in inscription house. We do do also, the providers right now that we have are all family practitioners, which means that they can do multiple preventative services, which includes children and adults in prenatal. If if you just have like internal medicine only, they're really geared towards adults only, but this one, that's what we've done, just so that we can have a round, balanced structure of the healthcare system. Go ahead and go to the next page or scroll down. So right now, the key issues I want to really take a look at is going to be the dental department setup that I told you guys about. Basically, this one, we just did a joint commission survey in April with inscription house. And what we were informed was that our dental system is good, but to meet the population and to really look at the peer joint commission accreditation process, what we're going to have to do is really improve that infrastructure, which means I have to expand, I've got to expand. Hello? So what I have to do on this one is for, I have to expand the dental services, which means it also comes in with a sterilization system. Because when when we abstract a tooth, when when we do all those hardware and the and the tools that we use to do the dental work, I have to sterilize them. They have to go through a very special sterilizing system. It has to have a dirty room dedicated all to itself, and it has to have a clean room. And then I have to have a third room, which is basically packaging up all that clean stuff. So in order for me to do that, I've I have to have room. The next one is the plumbing infrastructure. Like I told you, these are really old, old, these are copper plumbing. I don't know why they did copper plumbing. It's, we need to upgrade the plumbing system. And right now, I actually have to lift that whole modular up to redo that whole plumbing. So that's what we have to do. So go ahead to the next one. The electrical upgrade, this one is a major issue that I'm coming across right now is when there's a rainstorm or a thunderstorm, basically, I need to ensure that there's grounding that's installed. So that's what we're working on right now is we're trying to redo that grounding system and we're also trying to do the breaker box, all the electrical panels. That one basically, that was found in one of our mock surveys that we did from the Navajo Area Engineering Services, and that's what we're working on right now. But it's, the whole point is these are very old building, old infrastructure, and it's going to cost a lot of money just to get these upgrades done. And this is going to be a major project. If I do decide, if 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 the governing body does decide to do this, then we may have to shut down the clinic for, I don't know, for a time being to to actually do this upgrade. And then the other one is the patient privacy concerns. Because we have a very limited space, I have no room and dare to expand anymore. So now patients are being updated in the front area and and that shouldn't be. Every patient should have respect for their privacy. They should be in some type of a dedicated room where it's only them and the patient registration person updating their demographics. That's basically what should be the issue. So that's our three major concerns on that piece. The next one, go ahead and scroll down. So like I said, on this part is inscription house was built in nineteen eighty-three and right now it's it's basically outdated all the way around just because of this system. And a lot of these infrastructure system, they have to be special made because they're now obsolete, a lot of their parts that we have, especially the electrical panels are all obsolete. So I have to get either specialized products made or basically it's just going to cost a lot, a lot of money just to make sure that we upgrade the system. So the next one is going, just going to be statistics. Go ahead and scroll down. So right now, since two thousand fifteen, you're going to see we, there was about one thousand patients that were being visited for I House. And then the, in two thousand twenty-two, we only had a hundred and eighty-seven. The reason why for that is because of COVID, because we definitely stopped all that process. So all in total, all the way around, our, since two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-two, we've had about over seven thousand. It's actually more now this year, but that's not included on that part. Go ahead and go scroll down. So ambulatory visits, this is the one I'm really interested in, is twenty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-one in twenty twenty fifteen. By two thousand twenty-two, look at where we're at, twenty, we're at, well, two thousand twenty-one was twenty-three thousand. That's that's a lot more. That was that was our biggest year because we just got out of COVID and then we were basically getting back in into the swing of things. So right now, as you can see, the chart there, we're expanding patient, our patient growth is just going more and more and more all the way around. So in order to accommodate that demand, I need to have a bigger place. I need to have updated infrastructures and we need to make sure that we can provide the quality of care that everyone deserves in the community. So go ahead and scroll down a little bit more. And then on average, that's basically comparing, you know, accessibility. So in two thousand fifteen, forty-three percent had a accessibility to healthcare. Now we're up to thirty-seven percent because a lot of it, basically, we have to wait since, especially for dental, we've got to wait. There's only two chairs and, you know, we have to take turns making sure that that these appointments are accommodating those accreditation standards. Go ahead and scroll down. I think we're done. So so basically, in conclusion on that part, we did submit, what we're asking for the community is if you can assist and help us to basically get a land withdrawal. So we're, we're actually wanting to rebuild a brand-new facility, which is a solid infrastructure. I don't want these modulators. The modulators are too small and the the piping on those systems are not are not durable. And then especially for the electrical panel, those, so right now, what I've done is in two thousand twenty-one, we actually started getting the I House IT infrastructure in place. So that took a whole year to do just because it's a modular building. We had to do special, specific dimensions, specifications. We really had to work with that. So I'm really proud of NTU A. So we partner with NTU A and they were able to help us expand the IT infrastructure for inscription house because I'm going to be honest, you should have seen it, we couldn't even get the computers to come on. They were taking forty-five minutes just to log into EHR. But now all you do is just within two, a second to two seconds now, we're able to get into that EHR system now. So right now, that's that's what our main concern is right now, is we really do want to keep the health center here for inscription house. We just need your help to see if you can approve and see if we can get a land withdrawal. That's going to be bigger, a lot bigger, so we can expand our services. We do have, the provider that we have for inscription house, you all know that Dr. Thomas retired, so he was, he's been here for thirty-five years. He's an excellent, excellent physician. Basically, for him, once he left, we're we're getting other providers coming in as well. We do have a chief medical officer, which inscription house never had one. So when I got to here, we, I redid the position description and I got those approved for the governing body and we were able to hire a chief medical officer because before you guys, it wasn't here. So through her leadership, she's really improved the medical process. We're now able to do VFCs, we're now able to do PCIMAC certification is coming up. And so what we're going to do is Kianta's opened up their hospital. So we're going to go ahead and have joint commission come in the week of January eighth, that week, and they're going to come in and they're going to try and see if they can do our, they're going to do our hospital survey, so keeping our fingers crossed, we can get our hospital license. So with, once that Kianta becomes a hospital, then I House, on I House's aside, they're able to bill that facility charge, which means they're going to get a lot more money. So I'll be able to bill Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance, more money for the hospital setting, and inscription house will be able to do some of that process too. So in order for us to do that, we need a bigger expansion of the building. We need to add more services because you guys are closer to Flagstaff. I get more physicians that are wanting to come over to inscription house than I do Kianta because you guys are closer. And I think, and I think it's just because Paige might have a little bit more positive sight on on here too. So I get a lot of recommendations coming in. They want to come to I House a lot more than they do with Kianta. So that's one of them. I wanted to let you guys know that with that, I think we need to all partner up and let's go do very good and get some land and build a new clinic for you guys. That's what we need instead of a modular building. We need a new clinic, a lot more solidity and basically getting those services that we need and a lot of infrastructure because we should be able to tap into telehealth medicine, get you guys going. And then right now, if you guys heard, the HSA's director has actually, Ms. Rosensohn has actually finalized the VA agreement with Indian Health Services. So that means that I House now can bill for VA. So that's what we can do, but we just need to have the room. Right now, I don't have the room to station a VA clinic here, but we do have it in Kianta on that piece of it. So that being said, that'll, that'll, that'll be the presentation for me. It's okay if you guys have any questions, President. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
More room, I need the room because right now dental, I can't expand that room. It's really small. It's looking now, we need two chairs and I still need to do the sterilization part of it too.
No, I actually need a brand-new building. So what we're doing right now is there's a lot of funds that have, that are maybe available through the ARPA funding that Biden administration has done and some other funding. So Navajo Area Engineering Services are basically assisting me and we actually do the numbers and we submit that. For example, the other part I wanted to ask, let you know, is that the reason why I need that more expansion is because we ran out of housing. There's no housing here for inscription house. I was fortunate to have Bill Elliott, the acting HSA here. He assists me last year in January and we were able to tap into, and it's called the National Equipment Funding Process, and they actually had a lot of money. So we basically did a proposal, just like what we did here with you guys, and we submitted it to headquarters and we were able to be granted eight million dollars. So we are going to have a new apartment for the employees for inscription house to be built. So that's going to be built in spring. So the design and engineering is already done. We've already got the location, but when we build that new nineteen-apartment unit, we're going to get smaller and smaller with inscription house because right now they only have a little, small acreage. That's going to actually take up all the space for inscription house. So I won't be able to use that current land that I have to expand inscription house. Any other questions?
When you build this new building, there's going to be new doctors by I can, they don't have us if we are moved. And then so long, I'm going to do, a doctor there. So a lot of us, we have to travel all the way to Flagstaff to see and I know, there's more money for us. Sometimes we have to stay over at our apartment is the next day. So we spend more money on the motor. Or either we can just stick in our vehicle. Right now, it's just all together. So it would be nice if we have all that here in the I House.
Correct.
So when I go over there, will that block work or whatever, they do say, okay, the things that work for you, but you have to go home and qualify maybe three or two hours and get the results. So.
Yeah.
They're not working well. So there's going to be.
Definitely, I agree. And then the other part I wanted to let you guys know is, you know, with COVID, what we do is we have a specialized system. It's a, it's a lab equipment that takes up quite a bit of room. With Kianta, we had to do that. It's called the bio fire. And when you do that, it gives you COVID tests that are, at least gives you rapid, rapid response test. So that machine is actually pretty large. So that's the same system that we want to implement here for I House, but we can't do it because there's not enough room. And it's a modular building. The floor is not able to handle that heavy equipment. So that's one of the reasons too, that I think we definitely need to have a brand-new building built. A lot solid, it has a solid floor and that's going to be longevity. You know, your grandmas, you know, your grandchildren can make use of it. You know, I, it might be me too, being over there. You never know, you know? So basically, that's, that's the reason why I'm actually standing here, talking to you guys about that. Yes?
Thank you. As far as health with the clinics and all that, what are you looking at as far as the costs and the square footage? And because I remember when we, like the construction I first did, it was that one. That's where I started all the wire, the flooring, walls. Hey, I didn't have that labor, that was forty, forty years ago, honey. Yeah. And the thing is, when we feel something, we don't look twenty, twenty-five years down the line. That day, that day, that moment, we don't look at the picture. Yes, if we would have looked at it that way, we would have. Because it means, and you're going to live, pretty sure you're going to expand. And look at, where are you going to do that addition on that same building where you can expand that? Look at the.
That's true.
So, the cost maybe and then the square footage or how many?
So right now, I think the square footage is going to be just as, I'm trying to say it's going to be not as large as, maybe as large as Kianta. I think they have about a redness that, you know, you know, they have about a little over, I think it's twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five, thirty, thirty, something like that. It's a lot, it's a lot, thirty, thirty thousand, something like that. So right now, with this new, is remember, when we build, we build, we were able to get a steroid community together. And that steroid community, we've been able to learn to go and work in Navajo Area Engineering Services. So a lot of you, when you become members of the steroid community, so if you're interested in that, that's kind of how it works. And then with that steroid community, they can, they can basically decide when they want, how much size they want. Because it also needs to include housing, more better housing. The housing here for inscription house, they're very.
The housing here for Inscription House, they're very old. So what we did most of last year was, I don't know if you remember, Commander Doris and Yasi Toya. She must have been here as a permanent, and she was there from 2021 to 2022. So when she was here, she basically worked at the housing and she tried to renovate some of those old houses. But then consequently, they had to do, but never able to do just a couple of them because of the infrastructure. Some of them are solid concrete, like the rest of the solid concrete and came with the, with the, with the bathtub. And that was really hard because we had to take the whole of the concrete out with the bathtub and try to redo that floor right there. Yeah, that's, that's, these houses are made, like I said, 1950 was the beginning of construction. So the way we forced to do that, that's why I'm asking that needs to be like, there is infrastructure for Inscription House. How can we, let's go, let's go see if we can do it. For the funding, it's probably going to cost quite so much money because right now, I would probably say, I think what, it's probably going to be as size as Pueblo Pantado. Pueblo Pantado Health Center just got built. So with that one, I'm going to say it costs about $20 million to $30 million. So remember with COVID, we have to triple that, double or triple that money. So it might be around that range. Yeah. Yeah, go ahead. Well-being improvement, things like that. Because there's just nothing except schools have. SDPI project, which is the Diabetes Grant. We only get a little over, I think it's $1.2 million. What we do with those is part of that money, we can definitely get some of that money and try to start saving up for Inscription House. So with the new building, we can also get a wellness center along with it. So that's one of the really good benefits about getting a brand-new building with that piece because Kiwanta, that's how the steering committee wanted it. So that's why it came with a wellness center. So any other questions? Okay, while I'm pushing your time and listening. Again, any questions, you're more than welcome to call me. Kiwanta have an open door policy. And just let me know if not, then you guys know Carolinda Greenstone here locally, and she's, she's been a great help. She's a good asset for us. And we have Jacqueline Yazi here, too. So if you have any questions, they know how to get ahold of me as well, okay? All right, well, thank you so much. If there's no other questions, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. According to A D D, George D. Baan, Nacha Ya Dan, D. N. Ya Nacha Ya, D. Nacha Ya Dan, itan nit. Akot en de pitah naas niigi shi toh 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 hajol ya da oh. Hawa nehinta nehigi nahaloan nit on de. Akok arey di D. Nacha do bek itzuljisho. E di den ley tsin tshpin das ti i dahero dahala epe dahaini xi dah. Aro di sabi ni lo, ye nadli xi dahodat ehijio. Pe dahizado hatan xi, pe dahtej nishet eit ego. Eh hot echol jono bahojol ne. Ako di ayandle Kiwanta Service Unit, junle Kiwanta. CEO nshlen naat ani le. Ako ade nineteen, twenty, twenty? November 2021 dan itan jadesnis. Aro eh chustehodols jodesjijijie di chibana hat igon el igo. Joo adu yagadil tlada chigi, be yagadil tladi gi la. It is anidi nit ado cho hon das jana. About a ton, that's 2,000 pounds. Ako eh nit ago xi, ahne biyagi do toh ntsil dadun. Bahat sa anegi, epe nahjehodat a xi dahneh in de. Ne eh. Clinic sa ani, I lost my word. Anyway, eh sa ani biyagi, ton das ani do ale biyain das ani ito. Hatan xi, ataliaat eit ahindan das a. Joo di katischi de eh hawan das ne, inke eh ya. Atan nidi biyapaisin dahatni, ale toh pin das linii ado. Sue or toh pin das linii, the new ones toh upgrait das ne. Joo eh bahojol ne, adu nihi clinic, adu isel en saani ki. Eh anidi ko, do eh osh te toh sni dan. Anidi gi natot aljone, eh eh hot a peso beniye. Atat, beniye da joo ke do hitachandaji ni lo. Eh ehpe dat tonni. Ako ad eh ya di de, joo hawan isel eni. Di ze nekaha do isel en dan leni di wo indal nishi dah yagadil tladi dah. Adu dahadil ni shoh hawan, ba aten joo jana. Ako eh di de apartment isleni, kin alki tahnaas naligi. Eh di hot ehhi pantot a, eh peso aita bashbajal ya do pe dat tonni. Eh di.
Don. Spring, right?
Spring dan ko, eh ko pe dat tonni jana. Eh hot ehhi nit, nineteen? 19 apartment units ko hot anit achana, adu choyachu. Ako hot en de di hawan ani, isel enani natot alsa. Nidi keyah abo ohitzi ito. Aro hashi honisla kot eh yan khaha hot zone de jana. Joo naso xi eh ya di keyah xi ito, pelgoltan wo ke do le. Eh di baba gana, ba ganat totsi. So eh hot a, eh naso ban, eh keyah hot a bena toh al. Ako eh di bayajustki iki, anina toh aligi eh eh beniye xi toh le. Ako di isel ena, naas, naast. Pa al ya do, ado isel en dan leni. Joo kad eh ya oh, nehakato ehikha. Dr. Thomas eh yan zago, adu nchasa ta hojijinde. Eh kretire ilah. Ako di de, anini nit ado, be ka na wo i dah. Aro hati xi an, pe hitche nahos ti iki. Bahat de neki khondi ki, eh hotat ego, atat tonni jana. Do she a akon skin hota, ba a abecho jisho xi. Na si, state-of-the-art clinic sa an do adu. Joo di ego, betzi losi sa an toni, joo jono bahojol ne. Forget that, that's in a nutshell, I guess. Aro len ike eh ya, what they have right now is already withdrawn. But naas, ba naad, sa benane toh zuho iki. That's possibility, too, by coming to chapter meetings and advocating that you need more land. Okay? Ahode, ahyeh kon honza da isnos an, kad eh ya kotu. Be asabe tanahoti ahigi, bejatati ka. The resolutions. Ako, number one.
Number one, TBK 2023-345-001, accepting and approving the November 2023 budget report. Once I get this thing up and running, then I can send you that here. General fund, we have $15,762.39. Personnel and travel, which is $140,089.42. The trust funds and land claims is $17,309.75. Summer youth employment, $2,495.88. Housing discretionary is $17,307.57. Local government's grant is $27,999.39. Chapter official stipend is $34,817.53. Scholarship general fund is $14,244. Scholarship claims funds is $4,916. PEP funds is $61,400, correction, $61,044.59. Veterans funds is $8,988.78. Emergencies, $23,331.37. Chapter maintenance operations, $9,000. Now, one nation sales tax is $4,412.13. Thirty-four is the agricultural fund of $13,478.47. Unhealthy food taxes is $102,000, I'm sorry, $102.90 with a total of $395,300.17.
Okay. I will need a motion. Pearl motions. Pearl Smith. Second. Jamie Notisting. Questions, comments, concerns? Ateno eh ya, I'll call, go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And keep them up. Oppose? Okay, TBK 2023-345-001 passes with 31 approval. Zero opposed, 15 abstain. Number two.
Number two, TBK 2023-002, accepting and approving the monthly cash receipt deposits for November 2023 in the amount of $678.76.
Okay, I need a motion. Okay, Renelda. Willie and Pearl Smith. Second by Pearl. Questions, comments, concerns? Okay, ateno eh, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, oppose? Abstain. Okay. TBK 2023-345-002 passes with 30 approval. Zero opposed, 16 abstain. Number three.
Number three, TBK 2023-345-003, approving and supporting the budget transfer of $2,000 from 036617 Late Charges to fund 036417 Internet Services, $2,000 to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated.
Only, no, I see the one correction where it says from 03. Put fund before that. 2,000 from fund, yeah. Okay, yes. With that correction, do I have a motion? Pearl? Um, what I was told is anything that has monetary, keep it separate. That way, auditors don't look at it and say, hey, why did you do this? Okay, second. Ella. May Chi. Questions, comments, concerns? Ateno eh ya, all those in favor, please raise your hands and keep them up until you're counted. Oppose? Abstain. TBK 2023-341-003 passes with 31 approval. Zero opposed and 15 abstain. Number four, before we go to number four, our council delegate Herman Daniels is here with us, so welcome him. Ya eh, that one. Okay, we'll go on to number four.
Number four, TBK 2023-345004, approving and supporting the budget transfer of $800 Purchases of foods, chapters, $800 to fund, to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated.
Motion? Okay, Pearl? Second? Victoria? Okay. Motion and second was made. All the comments, questions, concerns? Ateno eh, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands. Opposed? Abstain. Okay, T B K two zero, two, three, dash, three, four, five, dash, zero, zero, four, passes with thirty approval, zero opposed, sixteen abstain. Number five.
Number five, T B K two zero, two, three, dash, is, three, four, five, dash, zero, zero, five, uh, approving and supporting to compensate public employment to office specialists for Christmas Day, New Year's Day in appreciation to their dedication to the community projects and events.
Okay, the, this resolution, Niki eh ya, it pertains to our two public, um, employment, um, participant, or one, our one public employment participant, ya, let this, our office specialists, um, because they're under, um, P E P, uh, they don't get paid for Christmas, um, holiday, nor for, um, New Year's Day holiday. So what this resolution is saying that because she's a dedicated worker and committed to the projects and stuff that the chapter has, um, that we're gonna go ahead and pay her, um, those two days. That's what this resolution is about. So do I have a motion? Okay. Persilla Sosi. Dad. And Mary. G B Gay. Okay, questions, comments, concerns? At thenoe, go ahead and vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, opposed? Abstain. T B K two zero, two, three, dash, three, four, five, dash, zero, zero, five, passes with thirty-two in favor or approval, zero opposed, fourteen abstain. Number six on down to eleven. If you want to combine certain ones that are in similarity to each other, you can do that. Uh, number six, uh, number six.
Number six, T B K two zero, two, three, dash, three, four, five, zero, zero, six, approving and supporting legislation zero, two, five, five, dash, two, three, in action relating to the Na'vi committee and Navajo Nation Council overriding the Navajo Nation President's veto of Navajo Nation Council Resolution number C zero, or C O, dash, eight, five, dash, two, three, and act amending Title Twenty-Six of the Navajo Nation Code to allow for virtual attendance at chapter meetings.
D A I, it's talking about virtual, um, during COVID, yeah, don't, when we were under the emergency COVID, um, declaration, eh, don't, you don't, um, there were only a certain number of people that needed to be in, in person here, but we could also count the ones that called, um, called in on, um, the internet to, to be a part of the, the, um, chapter meetings. So we were able to account for our twenty-five, um, quorum, twenty-five person quorum. So we were able to keep our chapter meetings that way throughout the whole COVID emergency declaration. But since the emergency declaration ended earlier this year, um, we had to have twenty-five, um, members in person here with us in order to run our chapter meetings, and we've been able to meet that. But D A I to further that because many of our, our voter members, they're off at school, some of them are off at work, and sometimes a lot of them, they used to call in from there. Akoh da east, and that, this is to continue that, to make it part of the law, um, Title Twenty-Six, to make that a part of the law, so that we can count them as, uh, a quorum, to make the quorum, and also to be part of the voting process of the chapter. That's what this is about. Do I have a motion? Mary Ellis? Metcler? And Jamie? Noticed Dean. Okay, questions, comments, concern? Oh, go ahead. Okay. So you wanna put six, seven, eight? So you wanna put six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven as one vote, you wanna put those together, those resolutions together. Mary Ellis, do you concur? Hold on, we have to, um, make that first, and then we'll count, and then we'll read all the resolutions. Yes. You concur. Okay, so right now, number six was already read, we'll read seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven for the record.
T B K two zero, two, three, dash, three, four, five, dash, zero, zero, seven, supporting and approving the ten, ten-year plan or master planning on the establishment of a new outpatient center within the Tapi'kin community. Number eight, approving and supporting this, approving and supporting staff and official travel to the twenty-ninth Indian Nations and tribal legislative day at Arizona Capitol, state Capitol on Wednesday, January tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Number nine, approving and supporting the out, the community land use planning committee's recommendation to have the Red Lake Management Company Sinclair Store, Crossroad Store maintain a safe and accessible road around the store. Number ten, approve and support the community land use planning committee's recommendation to enhance transparency and community participation in the chapter house land withdrawals. Number eleven, approve and support the community land use planning committee's recommendation to, to start the environmental cleanup process for the burnt-down old crossroads store.
Okay, so all the resolutions from six to eleven, yel'ta, and this is, the motion was made to put all, um, from number six, number seven, number eight, number nine, number ten, and eleven together for a vote, okay? So, and then you had a question. Okay, number nine, eh, pertains to the crossroads store down there. Um, what the land committee, um, land use committee recommended is that Red Lake, uh, Red Lake Management Company to take care of their area, joke, you also potholes. There are a lot of potholes there, and there's, um, um, doh'shtehat eda. When we talked to the, the owner of Red Lake, Red Lake, um, Management Company in Twin Arrows, when they were having a summit there, he told us, just call me, I have, I'll have all the gravel put out there, and hajosh'tehat o'dni. It hasn't been done yet, and it, it, it just gets worse, and hah she, they, they, they say they make millions and millions of dollars. They should at least put some of that money towards upgrading their area over there, um, because, oh, you didn't ever to the, I mean, oh, sh, potholes that they, um, um, they hit that, and that's costing repair to the vehicles. So Ebony now, um, we, we said that we should act, um, push them to go start upgrading their area. No, no, that's just right there around the store, the, the store property. We'll ask them to pave it. To make improvements to it, is what we're gonna ask them. Okay, Ronald? But that's. That's up to them. But we can. Yeah, some of them do do it because some of their bosses do allow them to participate in local government meetings. That, um, that's what I found out, because that's what they say, that's why they asked for the sign-in sheets to us. Oh. Okay. It, it's not only for people that are at work, there are a lot of our students that are voters that, that attend some of these. We even have, um, I know of one person that calls in all the way from Georgia when he has time, he's a participant here and listens to the meeting and asks us questions. So this is just an opportunity for people that are, you might be on vacation during the time the chapter meeting is coming up, you'll be able to just say, oh, yeah, I can call in and be a part of the meeting. That's what that's for mainly, is for that. To have participants to call in. Otherwise, we sit here several hours before we meet our quorum. If, um, di'ta'ta'tang go go de ya, like Christmas and Thanksgiving, we can hit quorum really quick, but all the other months, we have to sit here for a while. So. Even, uh, neck et'yeshtit right now. Even, I, I explain what the CEO said in Navajo, so that they can understand what we're talking about. Number eleven, Niki eh ya. Eh ya ko'jo store, di'a'a jiko'ki, to start looking for, um, a company to start cleaning that up. Navajo Nation, um, they still do a charge. So we're gonna have to, uh, we're gonna have to find out who can do it, how it can be done that is safe, and then have it completed. That's our property, chapter property. That's why we said that that's what this resolution is, to say that we have to learn, start looking for funds to do that. Yeah, Black, Black Mesa, eh, it's under Shanto. Yeah. Yeah, eh, eh, under Ki'anta'aji. Okay, hold on.
Eh, kudotam, good afternoon, kudot. Ya'te, wala na', aronana oya keta'da nestlin, kudot. N'ge'da'se l'ol'wala, n'ge'da, thwunnes, eh, il'ha'ilno. Akwa' ndi ya'da, inhich'ehan z'dishut, oh, neal'sa'aj, give a, a little report there. Some, the planning of the ya'da, k'le'i, arusne'sh'ta'hat, il'gor'ko. Um, in regards to number eleven, an, an iwo'te, k'ho, n'ge'da, coming from, um, Ki'anta, this way. N'ge'da tse'ye, l'ol'wala, k'ho, eh, ah, she, hot eh, it's an eyesore. Aronana, n'ge'da, ek'eh, ko'jo na'aj'det, yo, ah, honahot eh, gas station, dan'de, odab'ke, store, dan'de, odab'ke, eh'oh. Aronana, n'ge'da, Cow Springs, eh, k'shi'bit, ah, hot eh, oya, aneh, altschol, altschol landep, aneh, aneh, ya'da, alla. Aronana, thwunna nestis, eh, ashon, ashon cleanup, eh, de'le, eh'ko. So, n'ge'da, Navajo Nation Council, kudot, n'ge'da, oya, kudot, hashiltsu, eh, oya bahanastik, adi'da, to, um, cleanup, these are, these sites, kudot, aronanti, b'ach'na'hot, aneki, kudot, n'ge'da, so I'm working closely with, um, Division of Economic Development to look for some fundings. N'ge'da, is this a cleanup, eh, da'ta, unreserve and designated fund balance, U E F B, eh, da'ta, l'la'be, eh, de'le, ni'ip'et'shno, eh, da'ta, eh, n'ge'da, se'sin funds, ah, j'obes'atlas, nel'ko. Ak'od, eh, de'ki, ya'ba'ya, t'inde, k'ho, n'ge'da, tse'ye, Black Mesa, Cow Springs, and Tubit City, eh, the, the old vans are trading, k'ho'sanki. So eh, de'ki, ya'ba'ya, patk'ujeki, kudot, bahautz'eki, so, har'ata, kudot, na'na'ali, kudot, kudot, I'm gonna include this one, kudot, not eh, kudot, um, ano'that'wal'el, kudot. Um, to include, um, the, all crossroads, um, trading post, eh, de'ka'ki, ya, so eh, de'ba'hadesti, kudot, okay, eh, eh, de'ya, nahal'na, ho, thank you.
So does that mean we have to change the wording of the? Or just leave it, and then if, when there's funding, then we make another resolution to say, di'k'ap'is'ap'and'no'ha?
The way I read the resolution, eh, this provides the Sclepsy members, eh, to start that process.
Okay.
To meet with those individuals, auto look for funding, and work with council delegate, work with economic development, eh, that's what it's for.
Okay. Mary? Okay. Okay, so, what we, what, what, what we can do is, in order to, to make this process, haj'oo'ko, koko, um, you'll have to look for three quotes. Not only the person you're thinking about, but another company that does, does the same, two more companies, so you can compare and say, sho, di'e, k'eh. And then we can use that to hit our council delegate over here to run it to Winderah and say, hey, this is how much it's gonna cost to clean up that area over there. So, um, di'k'ap'as'bas'op'and'no'ha? So, um, di, klap, koe, eh, special, shop, ban, no, ah, ni, go, yen, de, do, wala, aj. So that's the process that we can do. In the meantime, as the chapter here, we can, we can look for money to put aside to do that too.
There's, there's. Okay, well, I was just gonna recommend is that, um, there is the beautification grant that Kianta, the township, offers, Auto Intech. They offer a, another community beautification project. So those are the things that we can look for. But this resolution, like I stated in the beginning, eh, that starts that process for you guys to go ahead and start looking for those funds. The community, eh, eh, will go ahead and back you guys up on this to say, oh, that's what we want.
Yep. So that's, that's what this is about, is for them to start that process. Like I was saying, you have. But, Jokua, I'm saying is. What I'm saying is that the process starts with getting quotes, just like what we did with the assessment team. You had to get quotes, visit these places, and then you had to get quotes to see how much it's gonna cost to make these repairs. That's the same thing, the process has to start with that. You have to get quotes, get a company, how much is it gonna cost? How much manual power is it? How much equipment are they gonna use to push the total cost? If we rent it ourselves and do it ourselves, how many people are gonna be hired to do that? How many, how much gas is it gonna take for this and that? How much rental cost is that gonna be? And then the next one, eh, that this another company, eh, huh, na, de, ne, so you have to get those quotes and then compare them, which is best, which best benefits the, the chapter as far as cost goes, as far as benefits go. Auto, eh, but, auto, we do the process of doing, um, bids and stuff like that, because this is probably gonna be more than a thousand dollars and it may, might even cost more than five thousand, so we will have to go through those process of procurement. But this helps you to start that. Yes?
I remember, I tried telling the people, I wanted to be successful. So, you have to be involved. We did this assessment, so the other, eh, think, let's go out there, but even women, someone, eh, up there, come out and do the assessment. Same, same, for firsthand, look at what we had.
Well, my reasoning for not going on there is, I already know some of these places already because I already been on a lot of assessments for them. I already know some of these places that really need, some dire need, some, eh, I say, yeah, but, and, ah, I already know some of these places. So, um, for me, I already know my people and what they need. Because I have been out there on these assessments, whatever assessments we had going here. So, and the club C is not gonna be left alone, they'll be guided, they have to be guided on how to do certain things and what, what process they need to go on. So, any other questions? Atano, eh, ya, will go ahead and call for the vote. Um, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Oppose? Abstain. Okay. T B K two zero two three dash three four five dash zero zero six. T B K two zero two three dash three four five dash zero zero seven. T B K two zero two three dash three four five dash zero zero eight. T B K two zero two three dash three four five dash zero zero nine. T B K two zero two three dash three four five dash zero one zero. And T B K two zero two three dash three four five dash zero one one passes with thirty-one approval, zero pose, fifteen abstain. Okay, that concludes all our resolutions. And then now we go to reports, starting with our council delegate.
Yeah, na, na, Kodo, sfeel, kha, si, Kodo, ah, dona, Kodo, shuna, ah, no, lene, ki, Kodo, Tsapi, Ken, Chapter Officials, kha, na, zel, no, lene, ki, shima, ne, cha, ha, wa, ah, go, ah, dona, na, Kodo, sotsell, ke, Kodo, ke, na, sinta, eh, ki, ah, dona, dam, sotseli, aj, Kodo, na, ltsos, Kodo, naxa, ba, ah, hali, ya, ne, ki, ah, dona, da, shun, na, Kodo, nige, bebenan, ta, ah, ah, shun, so, lha, do, an, al, wu, al, shlo, Kodo, kui, shi, ben, ah, ke, at, bebenan, an, lo, Kodo, eh, as, eh, ba, ah, he, eh, si, Kodo, ah, dona, Kodo, sfeel, kha, si, Kodo, ah, dona, we have visitors in the, in the audience, al, shlo, Kodo, eh, as, eh, ba, I really appreciate the visitors being here, Kodo, dam, thank you very much. Ah, dona, altsa, eh, ki, ya, Kodo, Merry Christmas, ni, ch, de, de, sh, ni, ah, dona, da, Kodo, naxa, New Year, Happy New Year, do, le, al, shlo, Kodo, ah, Kodo, nige, nde, zet, oh, shun, da, na, Kodo, eh, di, ta, Kodo, eh, la, na, at, le, do, le, Kodo, planning meetings and chapter meeting. Ah, dona, Kodo. Na, ltsos, vik, is, nelo, eh, Kodo, eh, nehich, eh, hona, shi, Kodo, nige, chapters, bich, eh, hondas, eh, Kodo, nige, written report, eh, every month, eh, Kodo, nige, dam, na, zas, an, old, Jito, sha, twodot, Tsapi, Ken, bich, eh, hona, shi, Kodo, eh, shi, nige, post, and that's, nde, il, eh, Kodo, eh, da, as, eh, Kodo, ah, dona, Kodo, Kodo, ba, la, sh, na, shi, ki, eh, eh, ya, eh, eh, da, Kodo, eh, written report, na, il, eh, Kodo, Legislative District Assistant, in Small Canyon, ah, Kodo, dam, ah, no, ltsos, Kodo, Happy Holidays, na, na, Kodo, Chapter Officials, the North Region, na, zas, an, old, Jito, shantu, and Tsapi, Ken, ah, dona, grazing officials, ah, Kodo, nige, dam, District Two and District Eight Grazing Officials, no, lene, ki, eh, eh, Kodo, dam, Kodo, ah, don't, club C, wala, nda, haz, kha, Koo, Community Land Use Planning Committee, Commission, da, al, ge, eh, Kodo, ah, dona, Regional Representatives, nige, sha, twodot, eh, aj, representatives, eh, head local, ah, dona, Subcommittees, or the local leadership subcommittees, no, lene, ki, ah, dona, Kodo, and now, ah, ki, community members, constituents, ah, Kodo, na, na, Kodo, eh, kui, shi, na, hal, jesh, oh, ho, eh, every year, bah, na, hal, jesh, eh, Keshmish, ah, dona, al, se, da, iz, zel, na, eh, nige, dam, Keshmish, ya, aj. Da, li, ya, nige, na, shu, dek, kid, ke, ta, ah, shun, ni, Thanksgiving, shu, da, ni, ah, dona, ba, de, shi, kid, ni, shi, eh, ta, da, de, ni, bida, shno, how would you say Thanksgiving in Navajo? De, shal, na, ya, at, eh, cha, shi, shal, na, ya. Ya, at, eh, cha, shi, ah, le, shal, na. Ah, shi, eh, Kodo, ah, shi, eh, bi, ga, la, da, shno, da, ba, Keshmish, ya, aj, bida, ni, Keshmish, ya, aj, eh, ho, eh, shi, njo, da, sll, ne, Kodo, Thanksgiving, ah, dona, eh, Keshmish, bich, na, ho, jesh, eh, Kodo, ah, dona, kui, scan, had, ze, Kodo, Keshmish, the twenty-fifth, ah, dona, dam, Kodo, naxa, New Years, eh, nige, twenty twenty-four, eh, bi, na, eh, ka, Kodo, kwan, njo, shi, eh, Kodo, eh, naxa, shun, shi, la, nehich, nda, desk, eh, ah, dona, ni, eh, shi, bich, la, wa, no, lo, do, le, Kodo, ah, dona, Kodo, al, ha, da, la, shi, Kodo, ah, dona, Kodo, eh, eh, tih, ka, da, de, ka, eh, Kodo, I just wanna encourage everyone to be safe on the road, Kodo, nige, tle, da, la, de, bich, nda, eh, je, eh, Kodo, do, eh, zan, da, tle, nige, na, llo, shi, da, tih, je, da, ka, Kodo, eh, bida, ya, ba, da, da, la, shi, Kodo, tih, ka, na, ha, Kodo, ah, dona, Kodo, ah, na, ha, Kodo, ah, eh, eh, kui, shi, na, ha, sho, da, desk, kraz, eh, shi, ben, na, Kodo, ni, eh, so, da, da, hal, lo, ah, Kodo, nige, shon, shi, go, eh, nige, dam, nige, dam, eh, na, zon, eh, da, de, bich, zet, tih, le, ho, ah, nige, ke, eh, nige, eh, so, eh, beben, de, ke, le, Kodo, da, desk, kraz, oh, ah, Kodo, nige, dam, ke, ba, eh, da, eh, ne, ki, shi, eh, zda, altsri, ke, eh, de, tle, ha, kraz, le, eh, jin, hal, lo, na, eh, ta, eh, ashon, ashon, na, ki, de, de, jen, le, eh, jin, tje, Kodo, zda, ha, shi, o, al, kela, na, jdi, nah, two o'clock in the morning, o, ba, la, na, zot, si, eh, na, di, il, kli, oye, hona, zdo, il, ka, nde, le, jine, eh, ka, da, de, ni, Kodo, eh, bida, dam, za, le, jine, Kodo, nige, Navajo Mine, Navajo Transitional, Transitional Energy Company, je, eh, aj, da, yes, eh, eh, Kodo, ho, eh, eh, jine, ki, do, as, eh, la, kwan, da, eh, di, ki, ba, ho, eh, Kodo, eh, go, da, da, la, shi, Kodo, nige, dam, ah, do, ha, ho, da, bel, tle, ra, la, eh, in, sll, sos, eh, ya, na, da, la, ha, da, da, del, ho, da, ah, dona, ben, yll, tla, da, ah, dona, zda, tle, la, da, eh, da, eh, in, sll, shi, Kodo, eh, zan, da, nige, tle, tle, da, wa, la, wa, wala, wala, eh, eh, ben, eh, Kodo, ah, dona, eh, Kodo, lki, da, noht, eh, Kodo, naxa, la, shun, eh, ba, da, la, shi, ah, dona, asthui, oh, sa, ni, eh, da, ba, na, da, noht, cha, hal, lo, Kodo, nige, nda, haz, kha, go, ah, ba, na, da, noht, cha, eh, ya, da, eh, o, bida, 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 ah, wun, shi, ah, ah, dona, le, eh, da, del, eh, ki, ah, bebe, beba, eh, ba, da, la, shi, Kodo, so, eh, de, ya, da, eh, ya, tch, tch, la, eh, eh, ho, eh, ah, dona, Kodo, di, tra, na, ke, eh, da, ni, trah, ni, eh, and, de, kong, hlo, di, de, COVID nineteen, eh, and, de, kong, ni, trah, lo, Kodo, la, ho, dam, ba, eh, da, ha, nige, da, is, ah, go, throughout the Navajo Nation, ah, bebe, da, del, na, go, da, and, eh, kui, shi, ben, na, ah, na, la, nige, dam, virtual meeting, da, eh, da, yo, ke, na, na, Kodo, so, eh, de, ya, da, as, eh, do, dam, beben, nehich, eh, ha, des, sin, hil, ah, ah, da, cha, na, da, kes, ah, dona, na, nige, dam, nehich, shi, eh, don, his, eh, da, 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 es, bal, Kodo, nige, tlo, do, ha, ho, da, eh, ya, ah, da, da, la, shi, so, eh, de, ya, na, hal, na, Kodo, ah, dona, Kodo, ni, bel, la, sll, ne, ki, Kodo, um, legislation, la, Kodo, sa, eh, da, na, ho, di, ah, eh, nige, zah, ho, zan, da, la, na, si, kral, eh, shi, eh, Kodo, nige, dam, besh, bah, ha, sa, an, special session, da, si, il, ne, to, le, ah, dona, da, go, shi, eh, nige, dam, winter session, January, the third week, one, eh, shi, eh, Kodo, nige, dam, legislation zero two five five dash twenty-three, eh, ah, it, cha, to, le, Kodo, bel, la, sll, ne, ki, virtual meeting, eh, Kodo, nige, dam, so, ka, tra, na, ke, eh, da, ha, ho, jee, eh, ho, eh, Kodo, nige, dam, oh, 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 besh, be, henna, eh, de, eh, be, holl, na, da, eh, no, ltsang, ho, ho, da, eh, dam, all, na, da, tle, eh, ho, jee, eh, ho, oye, bebe, da, ne, de, ni, Kodo, so, eh, ben, ah, ho, eh, do, le, na, na, do, le, ben, an, as, eh, an, as, ho, eh, do, le, no, eh, Kodo, besh, ma, sa, an, nige, dam, summer session, eh, da, bel, la, si, tli, virtual meeting, de, dam, President Nigron, his, ah, veto, eh, la, ah, Kodo, this legislation, what it's gonna do is override, override, eh, 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 you, si, ben, eh, Kodo, President Nigron, veto, eh, la, ki, override, eh, eh, de, il, ne, eh, Kodo, eh, shi, eh, you, si, ben, eh, Kodo, di, da, ba, shi, sa, zan, ki, eh, ya, nige, de, ne, shi, ch, da, hal, ne, ah, dona, shi, ch, eh, da, da, la, eh, di, eh, naxa, ba, kes, in, zin, da, shal, no, eh, ya, shi, cha, da, zeh, Kodo, so, eh, de, ya, na, hal, na, Kodo, ah, dona, Kodo, nige, dam, there's another legislation that eh, Kodo, nige, dam, la, shi, na, si, sha, la, Kodo, eh, nige, dam, Utah State University, ah, Kodo, wa, lne, nige, sabi, ntses, ke, eh, 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 Kodo, sa, eh, da, na, ho, di, ta, eh, na, 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 ho, zako, nige, dam, sa, eh, da, na, ho, di, ta, eh, Health Education and Human Services Committee, ah, dona, dam, Budget and Finance Committee, na, be, eh, ki, committee, eh, trah, eh, eh, ya, ah, dona, Kodo, nige, dam, kal, eh, Navajo Nation Council, eh, be, da, ni, ch, eh, sh, to, le, ya, eh, de, dam, USU Legislation, so, eh, de, on, eh, bha, sa, zan, to, le, Kodo, nige, ho, da, ul, tra, ki, bich, je, ul, tra, to, le, ah, Kodo, wa, lne, nige, sabi, ntses, ke, eh, naxa, la, shun, eh, ba, ah, Kodo, ba, le, eh, ki, zda, ah, was, gi, nde, ba, ha, le, eh, ki, Kodo, wa, lne, eh, eh, fourteen million, ba, ha, le, eh, Kodo, ah, Kodo, besh, oh, in, sh, ke, eh, from the Navajo Nation, five hundred thousand, eh, in, sh, ke, eh, Kodo, ah, Kodo, nige, dam, summer session, eh, da, eh, da, di, dam, present, eh, shla, la, two point five million, go, present, eh, shla, nde, legislation failed by one vote, alla, eh, ah, dona, ah, dona, eh, pass, eh, sa, eh, ho, so, eh, ah, dona, introduced, na, shla, ka, Kodo, so, eh, shi, eh, Kodo, do, do, eh, shi, ab, be, eh, la, sh, ne, to, le, di, de, ah, dona, Kodo, nige, dam, Kodo, nige, dam, legislation, sa, eh, da, na, ho, di, ta, ah, dona, Kodo, Law and Order Committee, eh, na, ho, de, eh, ya, eh, legislation zero two five four dash twenty-three, eh, eh, Kodo, nige, dam, Fire and Rescue Fund Management Plan, eh, eh, Kodo, nige, dam, throughout the Navajo Nation, ni, eh, ke, eh, ba, ka, go, nige, Kodo, in, ltses, eh, ki, la, sa, ah, go, da, kui, da, da, do, lne, eh, ni, go, eh, Kodo, eh, besh, eh, ke, eh, eh, Fund Management Plan, eh, Kodo, eh, na, ho, de, eh, ah, Kodo, ah, dona, Budget and Finance Committee, eh, shi, eh, da, ni, eh, to, le, eh, Kodo, so, eh, kwa, eh, ki, la, ni, yel, khas, an, eh, ki, ho, eh, de, eh, nige, sha, twodot, eh, shte, kui, Tsapi, Ken, ah, dona, na, zas, ah, go, eh, nige, Kodo, in, ltses, eh, Fire Station, do, ni, eh, hal, lo, da, ah, Kodo, eh, si, ben, eh, Kodo, di, da, ah, Kodo, nige, dam, Law and Order Committee, eh, Kodo, eh, ne, map, ni, eh, hal, lo, so, nige, dam, Delegate Daniels, na, eh, aj, represent, eh, in, eh, ki, chapters, eh, la, eh, do, do, hal, lo, wa, de, la, da, de, ni, eh, Kodo, so, eh, as, eh, 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 ke, na, zeh, la, di, de, committee, so, eh, ho, eh, de, eh, Kodo, ah, dona, shi, Kodo, da, shun, na, nda, lene, ki, do, na, na, ashi, be, eh, la, sh, ne, to, le, di, de, ah, Kodo, ah, ba, la, shi, eh, tli, to, le, di, de, nige, Fire Station, eh, da, ho, do, lne, eh, ki, ah, Kodo, nige, dam, al, se, da, na, haz, kha, ne, the Twenty-Fourth Council Law and Order Committee, eh, Kodo, la, eh, la, da, ah, sl, la, nde, nde, ba, ni, ch, eh, yel, khas, an, eh, ki, eh, ah, dona, la, eh, eh, da, ha, wa, la, don, de, eh, Kodo, eh, 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 ba, hana, si, eh, 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 la, eh, da, ha, do, lne, no, Kodo, ah, Kodo, nige, sabi, ntses, ke, eh, la, hal, lo, Manama Valley Fire Station, but, eh, on the Utah side, state line, kwa, nd, eh, Kodo, three, one hundred yards, da, sa, three hundred feet, da, sa, into Utah, eh, sa, um, Manama Valley Fire Station, eh, eh, ya, nige, San Juan County, eh, besh, eh, eh, snel, ah, Kodo, that fire station, ah, ah, that fire crew, they can't go into Arizona, ah, Kodo, nige, da, three years ago. Mobile homes, la, de, la, half a mile into Arizona, ah, Kodo, eh, fire crew, do, nige, state lines, eh, bich, eh, ya, eh, no, trailer, na, la, de, kha, ah, ah, kwa, eh, 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 go, eh, eh, la, ah, ah, has, an, eh, ki, ah, Kodo, ah, dona, Navajo Nation Council Law and Order Committee, eh, da, de, ni, nda, eh, de, ni, that fire station, so, it can cover Arizona, le, Kianta, Kodo, ne, then, ho, so, ah, dona, into Utah, eh, da, de, ni, eh, Kodo, eh, eh, shi, ke, eh, zeh, la, Kodo, so, eh, de, ya, na, hal, na, Kodo. Ah, dona, Kodo, nige, dam, il, eh, la, wa, ka, shla, na, sho. Eh, de, ya, na, hal, wa, ka, shla, Kodo, ah, dona, Kodo, nige, dam, eh, shi, eh, Kodo, nige, dam, ah, dona, kui, shi, eh, meeting, sinta, eh, tli, eh, Kodo, throughout the, the Navajo Nation, besh, ma, sa, an, eh, ah, Kodo, today, shte, wo, da, de, ya, de, I was supposed to be in Church Rock, New Mexico, Law and Order Committee, ah, eh, la, nda, la, shi, eh, kui, shi, de, sha, ni, sa, Kodo, shte, wa, shi, Shi ikojjo dey shalni sonodoh, shtej shalha di ya di deh. Shu denedgo nanakodoh, shukei. Koj shukeh, inu today behlwon shlon doh sonodoh. Wall shtej oni chijah di ya akon. So beshma hasana shi adeh. Shu daasah doh negey road columnel, she ebse nahaneh doh. Eh deh kodoh jo kodoh inill won shlon ikho. Akon kodoh, beso lha ndahi des, ellah kodoh. Akon dey kodoh lha tsapi ken la nachabek eh washla. Two point four million eh ya ya, two point four million. Eh belanoslin, eh shi ikodoh shanan tannl negi, eh azar ye yendal nashiko. Aru nan negey, old Jeto eh doh doh laada eh. Close to over nine hundred thousand eh ya babi, babi ke eh washla old Jeto. Because if you look at the delegate regions. Negey da, arpan tahidest, ane da, old Jeto laada ba, badass so. Water utko, dat eh gi ben nah, nine hundred thousand eh babi ke eh washla. Aru tsapi ken two point four million. Aru nan negey dam, shanto, three point four million. Akon itzihigi kat, one point nine million, kon elasunneli reko. Eh negey dam, naatzas an, eh kabellnaaschnesiko eh deh. Eh babi ke eh gashleh dolel, one point nine million. So eh hot dat eh ko. So a ye go, beso ndet, beso kwe inu, jiko for can council delegate. A ye ba, ban seskes ego. Akon negey hot eh leh, negey dam, anjgaadeh doh oiye. Oiye kodoh eh nan nah, aru queen, da naalachet noh da, beshichah atze. Akon doh doh doh, kujjidoh ne keh, ba na shagi, tsapi ken shah tchohodoh nan, naatzas an. Bebe eh doh bebe tchahanasseiko. So negey dam, nine hundred thousand, gei pa, babi ke eh washla eh doh, eh doh wall adaanidandeh, doh adahol shisho. Eh adan beba laanoslin azagi, bad dey one point nine million gei eh ya negey. Naatzas an ba, babi ke eh wash, babi ke eh gashleh dolel akon. So eh dey ya wonsodoh, ni chijjo report shlar dolel kodoh. Aru nanakodoh, aisi kodoh, hashinso, inchidan sinreko. Akon aisi negey deh, tchadashah da, an nacha. Nachatsa deh eszinh doh kodoh eh nchinnasni goh, eh kodoh. Doh incha yo shneh dah. Akon eh dey ayat oh wonsodoh, ben ichahasi dolel. Aru nanakodoh, ah won sheho deh shlihlihodoh, eh deh shneni dagodoh sabek esh, naal sosbek esunnelo eh. Ni chijahonashegi kodoh. Aru nanakodoh dam, anadet shneh kodoh dam, Merry Christmas. Aru nan Happy New Year dolel kodoh. Adah dahalhliya ye go, ghalshin ba dahalhliya. Ghastchwid onan, yemadanl, ne negi da, ba dahashin ya ye go. So eh dey wonsodoh ba hasi dolel kodoh. Shma.
Ache, kodon hi chahinzi doh, kon cheniya. Many, many chapters, oh, you've been calling in, being a part of us that way. But today you decide to be with us and that's good. Akon, sheha, shiba, shinsan, konde. Aru nda. Grazing rat.
Crazy, crazy rat. Yad eh, kodoshin toh, oshin little bit, little bit report toh. Permit is meeting, negi eh move up a dey lia, thursi jinsha. Bejilthahosna eh are, ah, hadahito, khatastano da di ting. Ne cheni ya go, hastchwinnon. Buy a man's gift or gift exchange jeneh. A lady, buy a lady's gift, kodah, exchange da doh shlihlih, he do come. So eh hot eh la azah. Trying to get BIA to come over to do some presentation. Kon de, shi need aisi see if we can do it. Eh dey ya, doh nacha. Aru, hot at, eh, hashinita, lshos. Ay tsi hikida, tsohotati, tsohi naon hi li, ban da ti lchol. Eh shi ya da tally. Aru, ah, lha doh yud ot, ot, lej jo, eh bandi shnillno, nehakha leh. Eh da keed in person, permit hallo go, in person. Jo gallo dolel, kad gi eh hot ah. Get hey and we do get hey eh hot ah doh, nsonban seskes. So, eh hot eh, la ra den, permit obida, hallo ot, ot, kon ot, obanda olthchat ot, ot, den. They don't come around, so. Eh dey ya, eh shi doh ban sarafkes dolel, hot ah. Eh dejjo, ala, ben yen, chugado, halin, hullo eh ben ye atzuzin dolel. Oba atshalago, eh might as well get rid of your permit. Heh dey, atachyol, ino dolel, iba zdoltsos. Aru na permit, hajodoh, chijjo, ino toh, eh doh, banwin, ino na. Cancellation. Eh deh, at, ona ho, tsan, cancel dahlaat dolel, dan hitlningol, so eh. Aisi, hot at, edo, yudo, hot ah, doh, oh, yubdo, ba sad hullo, goh, eh. Ye go, dispute again at, because of the permit. Shantchohot azusahga, amho mehndeh doh. So eh dey abansokes. Aisi, aru ni hi permit oltsosos, lho nas. Cheshi ba zinol shi egi, lho tchahrohlih, eh aru let him carry on again. Kujjunzash, shi hot ah, niye permit dahalloh da, eh noh cha ho, jish. So kon de ye o ba dahalhliya. Always tell you that, shots, bek, ashii, linn, linn gei ya, we let the, bedanir. Eh nihi dey ilinana azah. Horse gei azah, asati, asati bahochent ayo. Aru deh bedo bek, ashii eh ya, you can do it yourself. Only thing that you will not get is a penicillin. Eh bahochent speed, ah, led, ayo, ilsitnaaskei. Ah, kon drug, ndejcha, hot eh, hegahit ah, deh, oh, akoda, akoda atzav, neina. Lot of sheep and bek, ashii dat ehida, di, di, doh. Doh butchahodah, odaholje, beblkatahascha, so they put a stop to selling penicillin out there to the public. So eh hot eh, ni chijbahochent. Slin, so only, bedanir, it's the only one that can buy and, and give a shot for you. Eh dey ya, hot ah, ni da, da deslon da yilla. So eh dey ya, azah hot ah, ni chilas, bevnan ta. Eh aisi di keyahagi, bahwahliyan doh bek, ashii da, nihi lihdo, aisi produced dahlechodan hitlneh. And kind of drop, lansghaut, drop, 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 ho, jishigi ben nache. Hot aisi lha hot oh wetah. Ah, laan deh leh, jo, hot eh. I know one person that is way up there, ah, la. He's only has ten sheep unit. He has about ninety sheep doh bek, ashii doh llin, doh de bebe halloh da. So that's way over grazing. Ah, chepelhan, na, nde, eh, anidiha, national tally count, tolen. Kar e kon deh, di nihiyan, sos ti shint ah dahleh. Kadon, ke dahol nepe, dadonleh, kodon, deh bob dey ni. So eh dey ya, hot ashka, sonba dahalhliya, lae da asho. They brought it down, but they still need to bring it down lower. Lee da aisi, at, lit, ndo, led, abat, danweshi, oh yujnol kaltolel. So eh shi dey abansokes dolel, kon asana. Doh da dahalhliya, da des, az, tsjir. Eh da aisi, anji dahalloh da eh nohsam. Aru deh bedo, tchodoh, ah, shonlin, ah, submental feeling. That's what we get to, aisi, eh doh, ah, doh beben dahlneh, dan jiri nekodoh. So eh dey ya, hot eh, jono shi njerada, khato next year roshin, January roshin, anari ka, aru illejeh. Dolel, ko, sheha, thank you.
Thank you for your report, sheha. Aru. Did everybody get tickets? Sounds like jingle bell, jingle bell, jingle all the way. Um, shana. What? Um. Vernon and the staff were gonna be ready for the tour prizes. Billy, do you have a report to give or?
Yad eh, good morning. Or afternoon. Di tlatso, eh shi bayeske. Not only us, but for Western Agency, so eh, atah diya. So, but I don't speak for, it's a big can either, cause we don't have a. An organizational representation. So, Jeff meeting scheduled today, to get appoint, some new chair or, or commander. So it's been, you know, how you all take it, it's, it's in the highest planegi. So, next Monday, we propose a schedule in the meeting, if that's okay. Eh shi lshen ago. So, taas, ta doh, sihlaat nanigi, ta edo, khaslaat nanini, I can take care of it. So we'll have a small dinner, we'll do our meeting. I think most of it's gonna be virtual, so you, there, I'll, we'll publish a phone number and I. Eh shi a, dahlaat net dolel. So ay doh ko, ne, tlatso, ondaskegi doh. They don't come to the meetings, nehah chin dah, so doh. They don't, they can't make it during the work week, but that's only time we're available. So, next Monday, noon. It's a big can Veterans Association meeting. I, kabatahneh. Any news from the Western, for veterans? So, we, we got a new advisor council done, has been. So, the, the chair is from, from Western, she's a. Talani Lake, that now, the Cabaret La Mel. So, next week, we're gonna have our agency meeting at Tonahali, on Tuesday. Nineteenth, eighteen, about ten o'clock. So, Western Agency Veterans Organizations. Eh azar lha leh dolel. So, it's open to the public, if you want to attend, you're welcome to come. But it's, it's for the organizations, is eh ant, and it represents all veterans from Western Agency. And uses the commanders, they chapter Veterans Organization, you know. Atsehnaas, tanegi eh, eh ba, eh ba, eh ba, la, la naatle. So, our agenda's pretty light. President Niagara was asking for goals for the Veterans Administration. Eh shi eh, the Veterans Administration eh is run by. Estago, Baldwin. Eh, tlatsan, the central, I didn't say, stado. The problem with that, eh administration eh. Agencies go. Veterans, ke da des, Veteran Service Officers, doh gan. Inda doh, she, Veterans Housing Program Managers. So, they're, they're specialists, atah. So ho gan, da, nelengi, ohi, neh, hotsa. Doh kade, awpa beso, ah, veterans, fifty million dollars be, nill. Atahla ho gan iltsi deh. Eh eh debe, ah, eh heh atzwy doh ilgi, so you got about seven months itsi. So, eh chefi da dihko, ha, hashita ha, allah, na doh, lshilbhasin oh, ant, neh, ot, talhkeh. So that's a big deal, ah, shi paper, she dey nohtcha. She's been, she's at a House, Health Education and Human Services Committee. A Benashi Oversight Meeting, yanaskeh, tish, hashita iklahol, na ado isin sata shi. But. We're gonna do a resolution, no confidence, from Western Agency. Ah, da, zisho. Um, heh deh, na, ah, haithara. But that's not the only concern, eh ant, neh, Veterans ke da des eh. Oh, atzah, na, nde, leh, doh, doh, ado, ado, konan, na ni, isnoh. So Western Agency, we don't have a Veteran Service Officer. We don't have anybody helping veterans at the agency office as far as federal level. And that's true for three other agencies. There's only two agencies that has VSOs. So, the, our delegates, ge, hashita, shalha. That used to be your position as an hes, I mean, ah. So housing, ge, so it used to be our. Rural, rural development. RDC. Nda. Ah, you, um, is it, is it das? Is it, ah, ta, ya, doh, di, tahoga, diheoga, bahto doh, nillki, atzahnol deh. Eh osunnel. Arat zisho, kaat doh, wahl shisir. Shah, Niagara, ni go, a thousand home initiative, ni, one thousand homes notnel. Ah, toh, ndi, veta dsnita, veta daniisa. So, if you applied for a house. The requirement for veterans, ge, every year, di naal sos. Elkeh, na, na ni, nelengi, you check on it and you update your records. Shoh, koe dah, tah, tah, diya, diheshi ohiye. Hashta, ah, ndi da, zehin naan deh, ja, ne go. They don't update their records, home site lease, ake, ake da datanoh. Eh shi Veterans Administration ya, allo, home site lease, hai, nda, lshano, tagatoh, gotada. Nobody's working on it, your home site lease, it's all up to you. So next Monday, we're gonna have our meeting here, and I'll, I'll brief more about what's going on. With this administration and stuff like that. So, thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be right there, if not, or I'll be at the store. So, thank you. Oh, Merry Christmas, and thank you for your service.
Oh, sheha, shana, hon hi chahinzi, akon eh deh. In this community, we do have a lot of veterans, godah. So, I would encourage, if you know a veteran that's, that needs to be here, let them know. Lot of meaning, notle. Ni chahliya, adah, adah, toh, ndaha, ah, atcha, tabu doh, noh, bebe chijya, taskeh. Okay, so. We got our meeting, our resolutions, all that done, except for one thing. How many prizes do we have? Right here. Hello, administration. Number one prize. One eight seven, eh shantet, a bakat. So last three numbers, they different, yeah. Four, seven, three. Four, seven, three. Yeah, I, I said, the first three numbers are all the same. Okay, so, this one? What? Okay. Next one. Four, seven, zero. Yeah. Four, seven, zero. Thank you. Okay. Next one. Four, eight, three. Four, eight, three. Merry Christmas. Chats. Four, seven, nine. Four, seven, nine. Four, seven, nine. Did you take one out? Four, six, zero. Four, six, zero. Right there. Four, seven, one. Four, seven, one. Four, seven, four. Last one. Four, eight, two. Four, eight, two.
You're disqualified. You're a candidate.
No, there you go. That's yours. Merry Christmas. He said. 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 Adjournment. Motion for adjournment. Pearl Smith, second. Shema. Mom. Mom. She second. Sylvia. Motion by Pearl Smith. Second by Sylvia. All those in favor, raise your hands. A pause. Abstain. I'm put zero. Motion or adjournment at two oh two. PM Mountain Standard Time with a vote of thirty, twenty nine, approval, zero opposed, zero abstain. Thank you very much. Have a safe travel home. Merry Christmas. And Happy New Year.
Thank you guys all for joining. You guys have a wonderful evening and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Well, we'll see you then.